Good evening, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this town plan field worst likely meeting for November twenty fifth and ask you please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands alone in this land, and to the people whose liberty shall be served. My dear local residents, I am Jeff Henry.
Thank you, George.
I would say to approve the meeting minutes for worst likely meeting from eleven, eleven twelve twenty four.
I approach you to approve the meeting minutes for eleven twelve twenty four.
No, I'm not going to.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
I am the public comment. Everybody here has a right to speak for public comment if you wish. Might just point to the microphone and ask the party to say your name so that we can get a good second check.
Good evening. Name is Paul Martin, I live at one twenty six River Street. I'm here about twelve over my wife, one forty six, at one twenty five. I understand that access road that you guys brought up earlier, we said that's unavailable, an unapproved road. Unfortunately, this road is headed into town and in the middle of Tulsa. Since I've been living in this town since two years. And I've had friends who lived up in that area. And that road always had it. In the last couple of years, uh, two years, uh, two thousand twenty two, they asked me to address from the town to come through the thoroughfare the last couple of years. The gentleman used to live to the left of us, or to the right of us, whatever. He used to follow the road prior to that. And it was never an issue. All of a sudden, the last few years, as the town, the thoroughfare has become an issue and everything. Uh, I had called the town because walking through there during the summertime and walking around, I found like, looks like a deep bar in the dark. My children have dug it up. I found another one. I called the town. Unfortunately, I spoke with the secretary, and I can say this to the secretary, doesn't have any personal, um, customs chart that she was trying to move. When I asked her, I asked her to come out and look at it and assess this. Now, with everything looking at this, can anybody say, you know, even if the town just want to take care of the roads? The point of access of this road, I look at as a safety path. Because of the fact that first responders do not park on River Street. Once they park on River Street, it becomes a one road street. And that River Street already is only dated as starting dead in that night. Your people traveling up and down that road, those in the speed limit, their own speed limit, they fly across it with only fifty, three thousand miles an hour on that road. So anyone who's parking in front, especially first responders responding to a fall, they're putting their lives in danger as much as anybody else. The easiest access for this, for first responders to come to there is in the back of the Conway is out, which has been made millions of times with death rates. So easy access is from that road in the back. That road needs to be maintained. It hasn't been maintained in honor of the life of safe death rates. We moved there in two thousand nineteen and still the same road. It's been, had never been kept up. So now they're asking the town, how about though, if I do something with the road? And now all of a sudden, you get letters in the way on the side that said unapproved road. I don't understand how this came about being an unapproved road when this road had been there, where such the yellow houses have been built. So I don't understand what the, what the problem is with the budget for this one town. So my main concern is that the road has to be taken care of. Well, the trash, everything goes through there. Even the trash bins put on that side of the road, can't put them on River Street. If you put them on River Street, it takes from the road. There is no sidewalk, there's no nothing on that other side of it. So roads out is the best possible place to put the trash. On my property, there's cement that we put that trash on it. But possibly there's another cement pad that somebody used to put their trash bins on now. This is an access to the back road safety when it comes to the back road. You can't have trash bins on River Street because of that, that it puts the town to be in one road. The entire road we there is already bad because of people speeding. Ruins out is the best access. We have two access, one to Talbot, one to Palm Springs. From my understanding, as long as you have public access to the public roads, the road that is being accessed on now becomes the public, which is part of the town. This is what has to be, this is what we have. So that, I mean, my concern is mostly is, I live in the middle, everybody's already shoveled their area already, but the whole road, it, it has to be cloudized, it has to be taken care of. And in the last two years, we've asked the town to do this. And the only thing we have actually done is fill the potholes and Palm Street, Palm Street, and Ruins out. That's it. So I don't understand how all this all came about being unapproved road. Your map indicates right here, it was a road there for a long time. And from my, from my indication on this, it looks like it posted a three point access, but it never completed, and it's got the two point access. The third access on is supposed to come on River Street, but they never did. It's all over the road. The gentleman in the end over there, he required that we knew whether or not he answered. Not far. Well, on the end, it's over the road. You can see where the road used to be, but it, as it go over, it never finished it. You get tarred to the pot, unless I think it's just through our, through our holes in the back that we use on a daily basis. Yeah, oil is full of nutrients and protection. But on River Street, you know, the majority of houses, oil gets to the road by the front, by River Street, and all the access is in the front. And I think it's the only thing that, that we are satisfied.
I did ask the town if they wanted to unveil, if they wanted to have a game. And I was told they didn't fail the law, but was never able to facilitate, we wanted to fail. And then I was told the law didn't work. So if you receive any information regarding to what the tally would be, well, that's enough. But there is still a lot that can help us around. Yes, my children have taken out two rods, my children have taken out two rods, one that they didn't want anyone to have, any damage to it in the marriage. And I brought it to the town garage, uh, off of the area of the army. So I can show the gentleman there again, and that was the day that it was canceled. And we were, I see that one. And there's another one, there's one that we're supposed to, as a proposal, as a hot call. She asked if they could take account, I guess they can. But on that, I should be, but this is going to be third round. And we have to work.
Normally, we don't go back and forth, but I just wanted to tell you, you talked about the rods that were there?
Correct.
Do you realize that those are probably the marker pins for the land locations?
It was at the front of the road as the old street coming out of the road.
So they usually mark the pins for your, uh, land location.
And you
I'll be like with the river?
They were going to pick up someone to get it.
Okay.
They weren't monitoring of anything, they weren't pins. They didn't have any tabs on the ends.
And they won't, just cross.
Okay.
Um, if you want to talk about this further, you can always come in the office, we can go over some of the details for that. I'm normally happy to do that.
Okay.
Anybody else in the public wish to come up to the microphone?
Unfortunately, I didn't hear a lot of what you said, so I'm still a bit confused. But
Could you give your name also, so she can record your name? Could you just keep your name and address so she can record?
I'll make it clear, one day. I've been here about twenty years. And of course, I'm here about the roads that the town moved up in. If that happens, we need another Monday, right before that's given, we are already busy out of town. And I know there are at least two bedrooms on that road, a shady, almost a two degree. There are ten families on that road. The doggies and little pets, pets go down that road, having a visit with the father. Have a father to put enough down that road if it is not closed. Um, I know there's also many that have, that have wet, that have been, uh, that have been, now, like I said, I've been here for twenty years. And up until last trip, a neighbor has plowed that road and taken a cow to dirt on the end that the water washes down into a drain. So now, I think it's time for the town to move stuff to its job, to take care of that road. What's the deal? If Moon takes on, go down that road, one foot down, and we'll see it, somebody tell me.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to ask you to sit down with you and talk to the local authority mapping and explain what this meeting proposed. Um, I would do that. This, this is not a meeting to vote on this tonight, although this is up for this, so there will be, let's see, at the end of the meeting here, we're looking to do a second town meeting date for that, for discussion and vote, and that'll probably be December fourth.
September fourth.
Oh, we'll get to that, okay? Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on?
Well, in from River Street too. I thought today was the meeting, George. Well, that's what the sign said. Said today was the meeting, seven o'clock. I got the, I got the sign on my phone.
You guys, we got a joke. This is your guest, Ricardo.
Uh, well, it said this meeting.
How are you? Uh, my name is Jevana. We moved on, uh, one forty to one forty two, the street last August. Um, we're reading the number I have to do to kind of hit. Um, if you have to say just three reasons, I mean, I'm glad I'm a citizen and that road down here is probably the worst thing, um, between the rocks and the things that stick out. These are my elderly mom on the other side, um, it comes really hard in winter time, but it's not plowed. So we have thrown a lot of, just my fiance to shovel up out, um, which is four cars. So, um, also the trash comes down that road, so I don't know how it's leading from, and I left my road. Also, like I said, on the other season, it's becoming that way. It would be technically possible to park in the front lane, just the way that it's set up, there is no sidewalk. Um, I'm going to repeat what they said, the part five traffic in that street, there were lots on both street. Um, so they could raid, I just want to make up what's in the concern, especially when you want to have a full soon. Um, and we just, we don't
Did you, what's your last name?
Mark.
Thank you. Or anybody else wish to speak at this time? Thank you. Um, we can go to new business, uh, item number one of new business, considering act on tax refunds as requested, the tax collection is one this week. This week is one for twenty six dollars and fourteen cents for Georgia M. Sola.
The motion to approve, tax refund, one of the one twenty six thousand.
No, it's second.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. You will see item number two, there is a list. So every year, you should go through this, which is the expiration report for the town playing field. These are the appointed boards of commissions. And so I did have, uh, Lisa give a contact, every single person here. Uh, there were a couple that said, no, thank you, that you want to get back on for different reasons. Um, what I'm asking you to do is to consider to vote on those people, well, yes, besides anyone, for the continuation of their, um, and there's also an ending here, so you don't have to say that, so, no, I'm still doing. So you have to vote for each person to be approved, vote for, uh, you know that for the second one, um, so everybody here, if you would to make a motion to vote on, you can do it individually. Um, let's go through that, try to correct if you want. And these are people who were, who served, been serving on, appointed for us. Either way, and you, there's, you could say if you want to do it by the check, if it ended, so you can get time to wait, do it all on the top. Yeah, it's, 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 it's a little quicker, one, you do it one at a time. So for agriculture, those who wish to, uh, the alternate position for ag commission for Chris Barber and the January sixth, twenty twenty five, can you make a motion to approve?
Can you make a motion to approve?
Second. All right. All voters say aye.
Aye.
So the people who are the appeals, Rob Kerr with an end date January sixth, twenty twenty five, motion?
Second.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
Technology Development, Terry Tetro, again, January sixth, twenty twenty five. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Uh, on ethics, uh, Jermlyn Dagan, again, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Can you make a motion to approve?
Second.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
Uh, let me jump down to House Minister, Gloria, Gloria Bergeron, January fifth, twenty twenty five.
Can you make a motion to approve?
Second.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
England Wetlands, uh, Joe Campbell, uh, January fifth, twenty twenty five.
Can you make a motion to approve?
Second.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
And then the final one, uh, this is Brandon Wetland, the wife of Jordan Peterson, January fifth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All voters say aye. Thank you very much. Item number three, election of officers as stated in the town charter, section nine one A. What's your pleasure?
And then a motion that remains the same, just like, have a creative chairman or a deputy or student, head of the right, uh, secretary.
Uh, it's like you did.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item four, discuss an act on approval of worst likely meeting on dates towards twenty twenty five, as stated in the town charter five two A.
Can you make a motion to approve the date center?
And second.
In the discussion, everyone, none. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Item five, uh, discuss an act on appointing town council, resolution from the town charter, section two A. Do you have any others? What? Okay.
So, right, correct.
We have, we have a council with change, there.
Here we are.
Where are the, about where are the rates?
Uh, I don't know, what do they call, last week, I'm
Okay.
We have this decision.
Do you want to add, can a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to, um, to, to, to
I'll start with that. Thank you. All voters say aye.
Aye.
And that's the one thing about town council, I'm going to note on it, is that, remember we voted, very pricey, very pricey. Item six, set dates and time for a town meeting in the referendum, this is what we're talking about before. Um, we are looking at a town meeting for five items, you have your packet there. Um, a list of what we're looking to discuss. There are five items for, I'm looking for a December fourth, uh, timeframe for the town meeting. At the town meeting, you will be able to ask questions on each of these items. Um, but I would anticipate we will also have a meeting for this, we've talked about individually. But, uh, just what we'd like to do is bring it to a town meeting. If approved, first react, and then go to a referendum. And then the other two would already pass that in the town meeting, or fail, whichever they voted on. Um, and then the next thing would be, we also set the date for the referendum, it was the first request, if they pass. Uh, that would be right now, we're looking for December fourth, and then it is a referendum to December twelfth, here at the town hall from six A.M. to eight P.M.
Well, can we make it any other day than this?
Nope. Because we have to leave that up by way of the town charter and state. So we have to wait, we have to know when the term period
We can do it ten, the eleventh, uh, fifth.
And so what's the date, what's the date of the week is the twelfth?
October third.
And as the reason why is because most of our meetings are always on Monday to Thursday.
You have no one?
So looking at the fourth time here?
May I tell what we're taking? We had town meetings before when we voted on, uh, on the referendum.
Or is it a way of sets off your capital, maybe, um, seven, fourteen days after the town meeting, get your referendum, have these meetings? We have, we
So you have to have, you have, that's what we're going?
Well, you have to have these notices to say, we have to go to the North Bulletin, comment on the North Bulletin. State statutes for lookers to get rid of are forcing them to go to certification of the qualifications, because if I was to call the North Bulletin tomorrow morning and say I'd like to have something to print, the North Bulletin, for meetings, this is what they were giving to tell me. Oh, we can't get that, but we can have. How can you set up your ten day window, if they're telling you? So there is
Is that because it's ten business, it's ten business?
Ten days. Ten days.
Ten days, we believe, too?
Yep. You mean worst likely meeting?
This isn't the town council office right now, with that, with the package that's been booked.
Yep.
We have any set dates before, I mean, we just did
I can just say we brought, with the data, if I brought up.
Mm-hmm. Well, the last time we voted on the R and P, the D C's day, we voted on Monday night and it was a day for that Tuesday morning, we didn't do it. I guess having another person to do it. But we're, for the, yeah, for the, um, for the real estate
Can I ask why? Worst likely
I know a lot of people who have a lot to do on a day.
I know a lot of people have a lot to do on another day, so
I'm just saying, we're just having a
I'm just trying to space it out like that, or at least you'll get it from the North Bulletin.
I just, I would like to have as many people, what we can say is possible, um, we have a, like, we're using for making votes, because, uh, Phil Tower, Paul, what is Phil, they think?
Which side?
Phil, Phil, Phil Tower?
No.
Okay, we have it.
Can you do the text, can you look at? That's it, that's it.
Well, that's
It's not the South Tower.
But anyway, like how many people we are, it's possible to vote on, like, being within there. Do you
I have one problem. I'm going to make a motion. I have to make a motion to I have to make a motion to set the town meeting date from November twenty fifth, seven o'clock at town hall.
November November twenty fifth?
Oh, it's on December, January. Cross that out. Make a motion to set the town meeting date for December fourth, at the town hall, seven o'clock, in town referendum, pending passage. Twelve questions for December twelfth, specifically, the end of the town hall.
I would second that. And the reason, I want to just get back to that, December fourth is a town meeting. The referendum means all day, for voting all day, allows everybody to vote, is on the twelfth. So having more people there, it really doesn't matter, it's totally our only vote.
And that's your state?
It, it's Do we have a motion or a second? Can you have a discussion?
Six A.
Six A, yeah.
All voters say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item seven is to discuss an act on a RFP for real estate proposal. We are in the process, looking for a real estate agent for the sale of the E C T building to put it out with an RFP. We have two replies back, and that's in your packet for item seven. We have three, the first, the third person gave their packet to us fifteen minutes after it was due, so it's, it's called So you have in your packet, there are two realtor companies. One is the, um, they go by A N J, Estates Solutions, and you'll see in the back that they signed off as, is A N J Real Estate Solutions, it's in the given address, and the title of the agency company is, I tried to pronounce it properly, Repelled Love Real Estate Agency, so that is the name. And so they are a, they did for two point five percent of the commission, the sale of the building. The other came in and had real estate broker for, I mean, Shavitt, who is the broker for Shavitt and Real Estate proposal, he put this bit in and typed.
I'm going to put, give it to the guy, something, because and
And it's seventy, it's speed, it's five percent.
So it was two and a half, two and a half?
Just two and a half.
Oh, what's two and a half?
No, that's, that's actually, you can broke that up for broker, eight, so it's total of five percent.
I thought it was
That we tabled it on the third page. That's five percent total, includes two and a half listing age, and two and a half behind you. So this is the one that her, two and a half? And then, put three pages
If you don't think it's two and a half?
Have to
I know, so you have to take two and a half to, take two and a half to the
Two and a half, oh, yeah, I put it on the RFP, and that's what I have in my page.
But when you sell something, you have someone who buys it, and someone who
Mm-hmm.
This is one half of the
This is the condition that they're looking for from the sale of the property. If they, what they do require is look at that.
You're telling me there are sales properties, and hopefully two and a half percent, and you're not going to have to pay any commission to me? I'm sorry?
I think we both have to look to verify that, but that's what I was told.
We've verified that, because if you sell those things, there's always You're telling me there are sales properties and hopefully two and a half percent and two and a half, and which is to be, oh, sorry?
I think we both have to look to verify that, but that's what I was told.
We've verified that, because if you sell those things, there's always two cents. Unless the same broker is going to represent all the, all you like. Do you want to say?
I do, yeah.
Unless the broker is going to do the same proposal, and that does happen. But if you haven't checked it out, you add honey milk. You know what I mean? You have liar that votes represented by the same broker, that's it. There could be, there will be a liquid. But here's only, the listing agent, which would be him, is only two point five, which is exactly the same as the.
Their grand total is five percent.
But he is without a liar.
I guess it's all government. Because I wouldn't say that, so. So let me ask, we're supposed to take the whole, if we have to buy that, we can pause it.
So I told you to do a quick, uh, uh, uh.
And we also, we have to go around, do we have town ceiling, and it's not.
Now, we have to sell, we have to sell.
Same, the vote for town meeting eventually.
Yeah, so after we get the buyer and everything, then we take it to town meeting. But I'm, I'm really serious, that, that, that was. I, I think you will, we have to do that.
I'm, I'm looking at the person, and I'm not seeing anything about commercial sales. I've not seen anything. Like, I don't know if they sell houses, but they can't tell, but they sold. He, he's worked with a lot of, they've sold buildings, but not they own.
They own.
And he made a side note. He decided that they are very talented.
Oh, I know where it goes, sorry.
It's a third, it's a right.
I, I know, you know, it's a question.
It, I don't think. No, I, I really don't think it's going to work, because another guy, he's, he would have, that is, the, the liar. I'm almost proud of it, he didn't put that happening, but it was like two and a half. You have a buyer agent, and you have a seller agent, and all the real estate transactions.
I, I know it. Delayed it.
I don't, I.
Listen, sir, we need something to check that, anyway, to a special meeting.
We'll call five minutes, we'll, we'll, all for five minutes.
Our motion recessed for five minutes.
I second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
Time is seven thirty.
I have two questions. Um, first question. That, so we can understand what we're on the end, the road, and for that onion, so this will be the. You're not seeing that, that next line, but that we all give a note of. We put, we put in the video, and it's posted on Facebook, it's posted on the town website, it's posted everywhere. I don't have that, so. Okay, there's one website, if you go to the town website, it will tell you. So the next meeting. And you can go off these streets, I don't have that, probably, you know. They all have a lot on the website, because we just don't.
No, you, you know, I'm thinking, you need to do it, you need to knock like a never told.
Yeah, we do that.
And we, you need to knock it in here, but I, I don't know.
And they, you, you, and that's why they take, they make the big one.
I'll do it. Use reservation, that's just, you guys need to look.
I have to talk to her, so the next town meeting, I mean, nobody needs to win once. And I know it's been a while, so I'm just, I'm just gonna be sure that Johnson will take care of this, so.
You know, how many have we got that, as well?
Correct.
I will come if you.
Everyone.
Um, well, definitely, definitely. Sure. That is their opportunity to come to the town and, and make their terms and comments, well, and then make sure they vote both. Come to help, we're just assuming that you need to petition.
Petition for what?
The company you don't want to petition and, and, although valuable, and. Uh, you have to.
No, we won't have. People have to show up at the town meeting, so. Or a town meeting is home, well, what if it's only a nice, but it comes and they. The only thing I know you give a petition for is a referendum, which is going to refer. All that we.
Go to the town.
Is that going to hold on to me? Is it going to tell me? Is it being voted at, uh, you?
A referendum.
She never said what was being voted, it's not probably, that's probably tell me.
Yes, no, it's being voted. I'm, I'm, they put it in, then they have it. Is that the voting? You can, uh, go and ask. I can, yeah, okay.
Should be in the house.
Yes, it's okay, okay. Thank you.
Especially you know it on your own.
Yeah, all right, thank you so much.
The biggest part of the town is very hard to follow. All the town, the town, you have to, and that's very hard to do. When you tell it, it's, it's worse. Yeah, we make a motion on recess.
Remove.
Second.
All faves, aye. All right, so I did have a conversation, very quick one, with the agent broker. Um, she did not put that information in there, she was trying to give between one and two percent for the buyer commission. Um, I would just say this, it's not documented, it's too fluid. And so I would then adjutant motion for, uh.
I'll make that motion that we told you, if we have it, we'll pump it.
My second.
Any other discussion? There are none, all faves say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm just, I'm second. Sure there's no other. Yeah. Just to make sure that people understand that we have a tree lighting ceremony, Christmas tree lighting ceremony in park for twenty twenty four. It will be here, uh, open up to the, uh, Town Hall being lit, also the Christmas tree being lit. We're gonna have the high school, uh, Plainfield Central, uh, and Plainfield Senior Course. Uh, it'll be here in singing. There will be also the introduction of the twenty twenty four Business of the Year. There will be free food, free drink for family. Um, I don't know if we have a fire pit around this year because we're still on that red flag warning. They got another one down, which I don't know about, somebody.
It's still, it's still.
Something is there. We'll talk to the fire marshal and give his opinion on that. But, um, there's also, uh, A rides are on the track, they're getting free food. Uh, it starts at five fifteen, and, uh, other than that.
I'll second it.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
Seven thirty nine, thank you.
Thank you.
We want to endure the next ten minutes, and I can then meet you up in my office. You're welcome. And I do need to endure the ten minutes.
Can I?
Yep. Uh, it's, uh, Friday, December sixth, five fifteen. Sample will be delivered. All right, um, it's now seven thirty nine, call this Water Push Control Authority meeting to order for November twenty fifth, roll call.
All right, gang.
Kevin Cunningham.
Eddie Lord.
Uh, we have the approval of this, W P C A meeting, date is September twenty third.
I'll second it.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
Anybody here for public comment for Water Push Control? Okay, there is a whole business, new business, discussing act on approval, solar, solar array movement. We have been working diligently with Earthlight, talking to the plan to be able to move the solar arrays. Uh, real quick, in that part of that, at the store department, we have two clarifying tanks. Where we have money from ARPA and also, um, uh, things water guns, we like to make them bigger. There's more things coming to town, so we did use, I create a lot of things going on, sewer, that's one of them. In order to put larger tanks there, though, we have to move our solar arrays in the round. And we're off to one side, so there is, we've come to an agreement at this point. Um, so you understand that that is an approval to water treatment plant, and I want to know if we could prosper on that, and then we take action.
You're going to move the tank.
All right, everything's approved, money wise.
That will.
I take a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the moving of, of, the location of, of, of the water.
And they agree with the purple.
And they agree with the purple.
Uh, for two hundred and thirty dollars.
Twenty dollars.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Nine hundred forty seven thousand, twenty four.
So we put that on the motion, and they agree.
Now second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have to discuss an act on proposed selection of building group divestments. So you have number two. So we have an engineering corp, uh, company which is looking to put out the, um, specific occasions for the roof to be replaced. So, uh, they would cost twenty eight thousand eight hundred dollars for that D proposal. For the, uh, doing an existing conditions verification, design, construction documents, bid dates, and construction ahead name close up.
There you go.
Uh, possible additional services to be determined during this, from that design. So you would have to make a motion to say the twenty eight thousand eight hundred dollars, and then an additional ten, three thousand nine hundred dollars, you'd say, more.
You mean you wrote from, from Northland, that, or me?
Correct.
Why do we need this line complicated to put in Europe?
Because these are very specific items that have been fixed, and they, uh, content that puts stuff there for, and not with the government program, and you follow this.
So we have to have a company come in to, um, face the next, what, to put in Europe?
Correct.
Who did the last bill, all of those, that was.
Oh, four years ago, and I'm sitting, and, 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 and. A lot of looking companies that do.
Find them. Those, find them. Are you going to want some of it, or are you just, you try?
What, only try, you already have try.
You already tried, okay. Only other, please?
Make a motion that we approve the post, keep it considered, start building, it's, 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 it's twenty eight thousand eight hundred. Thirty nine hundred dollar cost position. For, 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 for.
Any other discussion? There are none, all faves say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Head number three. There is a, um, a letter that was given to us by the Home Executive, uh, Old Chester, concerning the property one six, level F. That they would like to not tie in to the sewer, but to the work themselves.
So this, you guys went and hired the company, so it's, it's, we wanted to have plug in.
Normally when a family appears in that area, uh, near, we then start putting away from the, uh, stuff.
I see.
Yep, uh, you can have them take care of that by tying in.
Right.
And then you obviously see there are some serious issues that they have because of the uphill movement, they have to go through it, and also the conditions of the, um, it's not.
Hmm, well.
So that's why they're asking, if people might ask, and how they're in the.
All the good.
I think a lot, a lot of people are trying to, what they're left up to their, left to, uh, to be, uh, from the low. I think they should have, um, everybody watch. I can give a couple of examples, and I want to say, they were not.
I'll adjutant motion to table this, so we have a step in here in the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table it, now, step in here in the next meeting.
My second.
All faves say aye.
Aye.
Having a forest, discussing act on bids from these, flip, in fact, the system of the electoral vote. For. All of these are reasonably priced, so you have to sort quotes from the companies, and so what they're looking for is to be able to make a motion to approve one of those two companies for approximately sixty five or sixty nine hundred. So the third, the fifth, and the eighth. So you've seen her email that she was looking for us to report with H D L.
H D L, first of all.
You have to visit, follow the, you should be seeing anything.
I make a motion to accept the bid from H D L, sixty eight hundred and twenty two dollars, eighty one cents.
I'll, I'll.
All faves say aye.
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 Discussing act on approval, the D C D meeting date is twenty twenty five.
And then, and then, uh, approved, meeting, meeting dates, that's it.
Headless, listen. Motion to main?
I'll second it.
All faves say aye.
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 There is nothing else I can think, to make sure, something else and other? Adjutant motion to adjourn.
The vote.
Second.
All faves say aye.
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 Now we're gonna, uh, pray, please, please. If you want to meet me in the office, I'll.
There is that one question, you need to tell the, the next meeting, town meeting for, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the road, and then the, uh, the, town garage, but it still take care of that road until then, given me, coming in December, and this is doing, and you have the only space now.
I think that's something I can talk to, I'm the supervisor of us, but I, I would at least want to throw it all to you, so you know where we stand.
I know the communication that we made, uh, contact town garage, the, the, over the road, the, the, is, you know, like, V bar sticking out, and everything. So, you know, they, 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 they.
I, I, please go my office, I'll talk about that. Okay?
So, so we have, we do, we do.
Oh, let's, let's, let's talk.
Thank you, dear, I think, I think twenty two.
You can't get the nine foot plow.
That's what.
And they tried, like, the plow.